First, 2023, 6:00 PM, regularly scheduled city council meeting. I need a motion to amend the agenda.
So moved.
I have a first by Mr. Glavin, a second by Mr. Lawrence, all in favor. Would you please read the amendments?
To the consent agenda, we're adding item 5L, Resolving, rescinding Resolution Number 48523, authorizing agreement with automated merchant services, adding 5M, Resolution authorizing entry into agreement with HVAC maintenance and repairs with Star Service for the Biloxi Fire Stations.
Motion to move the agenda as amended.
So moved.
And then that vote was 6-1, 7-0. Mr. Tisdale was in opposition. I have a first by Mr. Glavin, a second by Mr. Lawrence, all in favor. 6 to 1 again. Mr. Tisdale in opposition. All right, we will now have our prayer. Mr. Tisdale?
Let us pray. We lie down in peace knowing our sins are forgiven. We lie down in peace knowing death has no fear. We lie down in peace knowing no powers can harm us. We lie down in peace knowing angels are near. Amen.
We'll now move to our mayor's report.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. President. We've got some champions here with us, and I'm excited to ask the coaches to come up. I want to present Coach Brian and some certificates because they're champions, champions of Cal Ripken, state champions. So Coach Brian, this certificate.
Thank you.
Coach Harley? I guess I should read it. I'm by authority vested in me by the people of the city of Biloxi. Coach Harley, this is hereby awarded a certificate of achievement and recognition for the winning of the seventh under Mississippi Cal Ripken State Champions.
Thank you, sir.
Bubba?
Yes, Mayor. I'm sorry, I thought you said Hall.
Nick? All right. Now, the real champions, we're going to give some certificates away?
Yes.
You want, okay. And then we're going to have a photo op right here. Let's do a photo op before we get to the kids.
Welcome, Coach. Appreciate it.
Okay.
All right, so this is the state championship seven-year-old All-Star team representing Biloxi, and from what we understand, they're the first seven-year-old team that has ever won for the state. So we'll call each one by name. So first we have Ethan Alexander.
All right.
Next, we have Lane Asink. He's sick and can't make it tonight. Then we have Jace Bork. Wesley Downs. And that's our seven U All-Star team.
He didn't make any difference.
I wouldn't say we didn't do our prayer, but we did our prayer.
Welcome everybody today to the first meeting of August. Part of my mayor's report, I'd like to ask is, I'd like to ask to spread the expenses of Biloxi Tribal Credit Card to the minutes. And that concludes my report.
All right, and we do not have any departmental reports, so we will move to council reports. Mr. Lawrence, you're allotted a total of 60 seconds.
Okay, well, we, hold on, four hours and 15 seconds? I could do that. I'd just like to ask the question, we just had a budget meeting, we had the sound crew in here, how come they're not here for this meeting? Anybody from the sound?
The sound?
Yeah, the sound crew, the committee, they were all here for the last meeting, for the budget hearing, so how come they're not here for the council meeting, which is recorded?
I'm not sure.
You know, Shane.
Oh, you're talking about IT?
Yeah, yeah, whatever it is.
Yeah.
So I just wanted to know.
They were checking this out earlier.
Because last week, we had all the trouble with the mics, that's what they, that's their job, to make sure the thing is run right.
Well, you know, I think they're running right right now. I mean, I'm.
Yeah, but it don't happen that way all the time. They should be at this meeting.
Okay.
The recorded meeting for the people of the city of Biloxi, and they should be in it. We have any problem like last week, we had trouble after trouble after trouble with the mic, and we had nobody here to fix it.
I'll mention it to them.
So, I mean, I'd like to have at the next meeting, have them here.
They're usually here.
Thank you.
Is that all?
That's it.
All right. You sure? Mr. Gines?
All right. I was looking at the Main Street crossing, it's starting to look pretty good. It's, what kind of timeframe we got? Looked like they're about ready to wrap it up. It looked like they're getting pretty close.
Ninety-eight month period performance, right?
Here we go. Move the mics, man.
Yeah.
They should be finished up by the end of August at the very latest. So they're putting final asphalt down. At this point, the only holdup we have would be weather and getting the CSX inspectors there. They've been really good, they've been showing up, so we're just waiting, finishing up the asphalt.
They end in August?
By the end of August. We're hoping within the next two weeks.
Yeah, I think it was a pretty good photograph in B News.
Yes, yes.
About to, you know, showing the aerial shot of.
Yeah, they've got it, some asphalt.
It looked like they can be done in a week.
Yeah, they probably could be. And I haven't talked to them, I got an update in the last week or two from them, but they're very, very close.
Yeah, okay.
No, I wasn't having any problem, you should ask them. They know, they know.
Yeah, I think we're going to be okay. All right, that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Newman? Mr. Demming?
Ms. Labata, just an update on where we are with some of the projects we discussed, Campbell, Caroline Drive, or Campbell Road, how the drainage went. I know you had to go out there and do some more work out there.
Yeah, the Campbell Drive, the drainage that goes behind the subdivision, that work has all been done. We just probably in the last two weeks went out and put the sod back in the last yard, so that work's all done. I talked to the residents maybe a month ago and said, if you have any more major problems, call me, let me know, make sure, make sure that it's working. I haven't heard from them. We've had some rain events come through, so that's looking good. Campbell Drive, we have where basically you have sinkholes all down the road. Those are where services were installed. We're looking at options, whether we dig them up or we just repave the road. We're afraid if we dig those services up and try to, because they're not broken, it's just where we cut across the asphalt to install them. The road's settled, so we're looking at maybe just repaving that. And then paving, the rest of the paving, I think the rest of the stuff in your ward is paving, I believe.
For the most part, we have the sinkholes on Caroline Drive.
Yes, we have the sinkholes on Caroline Drive. That's still on the repair place list, we haven't quite, we haven't gotten to that one yet. And then we open bids on paving the end of this month, so that'll be kicking off soon as we get that awarded and get that scheduled out.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
And only thing left is the lighting at the Pops Ferry Park. I'm going to keep hammering you on spending that money.
You know, between 300,000 at the best part, you know, if we do some leasing, you know, and 800,000 if we got to choke it down, all of it. So, but we'll, Sherri and I'll meet.
Where's Sherri?
Okay, so we'll get that, and we'll invite you to the meeting if we need to on that, but we'll make that happen.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Nothing further.
All right, thank you. Dr. Tisdale?
Yeah, could I use the remainder of Mr. Lawrence's 60 seconds?
Well, he went over 60, so you're.
I'm into Kenny's time.
You're in the negative, so he took some of yours.
Couple of things. Mr. Crell, any idea when the owner on the De Bees project, that's a convenience store, gas, I know they lifted the concrete and all that stuff, that rubble's been there for a while, are they fixing to move that or something? They've got a container on site now, are they looking to clean that up or?
Yes, sir, they're supposed to be moving back over there at any time. They had to pull off to finish a project over on the gateway or whatever it's called, over and go for it, and he told me as soon as they got through with that, they'd be moving back. So I would expect in the next week to two, you'll see them back out there working.
Okay, thank you. The other thing, Mr. Mayor, and if, I don't know if Walt's here, I had spoken with Walt about this, but the contractor, I believe is Knee Case Brothers on BEA 1, 2, and 3, and the private road from Highway 90 to Mason de Orleans, it's pitted, a lot of potholes, and there's some question of who's to repair it. Well, the city can't repair it, it's a private road, we're not authorized to do work on private property, and probably the best thing to do, although they've been putting rock there, is probably put down some asphalt there, if we could push that with Knee Case, not only there. And I noticed that they've done that in front of some commercial properties, but this really, this really needs some asphalt there. Also, the silt fences along the sidewalk down Highway 90 where they're doing work, and the grass is just kind of out of control, they should be doing, knocking that down in some form or fashion. There's so much sand in some of the front yards that residents can't get out there to mow the grass, they would do some of that themselves, but if Knee Case isn't willing to do some of these things, I don't know what kind of pressure we can put on them other than just not pay them when it comes up on the docket, I don't want to do that, I'd just like to see them knock the grass down and put some asphalt down. I think we, I believe we pay for the temporary asphalt, or that's in the contract, so I don't know that it's coming out of his pocket. I believe that's all the time I had to use, thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Tisdale. Mr. Glavin?
Yeah, if I could ask Christie to come up one more time, she seems to be a popular director these days, just get an update. I know we had a conversation about Kimbrough Drive, I don't know if you've had a chance to do any kind of assessment, but do you have any kind of initial thoughts on what they're experiencing?
I do. I did, I did call the resident that spoke to you about it, and she, they're having basically the water, water's backing up from the ditch into her daughter's houses right there. She says that where our well site is, there's a driveway that goes into the well site, and it doesn't have a culvert, and basically all we need to go do is dig that ditch out, put a culvert in, replace the driveway, so it should be a really quick and easy fix. The longest wait's probably going to be getting it on the repair replace, getting it scheduled on repair replace. We've got money to pay for it, it's just getting it in the, in the order of all the other stuff we have going, so we'll add that to the list. You should see it when it comes out on Monday on there.
Appreciate that. And I did notice, and I did drive down to the turnaround on Mason Drive, I know we've been working on a lot of issues there, is that it's going to take a few more weeks or?
Yeah, it's real wet, so they're still waiting, they're waiting for it to dry out some. It's just a wet area, so it takes a long time to dry out. So I think, I think they may be able to use it a little bit, I'm not sure if it'll hold the weight of a garbage truck just yet, so they've got some more rock to put down, but as soon as it dries out, they'll get out there and finish up.
The pond on the adjacent property, I know it's leaching into that ditch, is there any remedy at all for that, or are we still?
I don't know.
Need to look into it?
I'm still looking into it, it's a private pond, so it's, I'm not sure what we can do to keep the water from, because it's leaching through that, basically the dam that's all along that ditch. It's, I'm not exactly sure yet.
All right, and then, again, I love your reports, but I just, to clarify, the SAVs that are in the dredging zone, any hiccups with that? Do we anticipate any?
I haven't heard any yet, but I will, I can touch base with Seymour again. I know they're working on it, I haven't heard of anything. They're working on some, getting some mitigation sites approved. I'll get you an update on that and add it to our dredging report.
All right, and that's all I got for you. Thank you, Director.
Thank you.
Appreciate your hard work. Last thing, I just, I also want to acknowledge the seven U state champs, and particularly Nick and Nick Moody and Bubba Hall that were here, not only do they work with our Little Leaguers, they got a couple of boys, but they, they give a lot of time there to our Little League youth, and the experiences that these kids are having are, are just amazing at this age and developing their character. Nick has also been instrumental with Machado and Patana on the, on the project out at AJ Holloway Sportsplex, and he's so interested in taking the success that we've experienced with the Biloxi Bombers, and by the way, our fire chief has been instrumental, among others, as well with that success story. But they want to duplicate that at some of these other fields, and so I think we're going to start seeing some of those efforts, and I hope we can give them all the support that we can. That concludes my report.
All right, thank you, Mr. Glavin. I only have one thing, this, this time of year, every year, whenever we start having budget talks, I send out a request to all my other residents in Ward 7, just asking for a list of things that they need done, and I have that ready to go. A lot of these are requests that were asked last year or the year before, most of them are, you know, either public works or engineering stuff, but if we can get that list and get all those requests put in and start knocking those out, that'd be greatly appreciated. And that's all I have, so citizen, or departmental, I'm sorry, council reports are closed, we'll now move to the public agenda, citizens' comments. We have a total allotted time of 45 minutes. Each person that speaks, when you come forward, if you will, please write your name on the paper at the podium, and then state your name and street, and we'll start on my left side, your right side of the room, you'll have a total of three minutes to speak. Anyone on my left side, your right side. Okay? Anyone on my right side, your left side.
Hi, my name is Rebecca Morrow, and I live in Gulfport, sorry, 13574 Huntington Circle, Gulfport. I don't know if you guys remember me from last year, but I am with the St. Baldry's Foundation for Childhood Cancer Research, and we had an event last year at Bioview Park, and we raised over $22,000 for childhood cancer research, and this year, sorry, Gulfport gave us Jones Park, so we're having it in Gulfport again. I know we were trying to get it here in Biloxi, but maybe next year, we can have the event there. So our organization is volunteer and donor powered, and we are based out of Monrovia, California, but all the funds that we raise go to local hospitals and help fund research for childhood cancer. Our goal is to make childhood cancer treatments that kill the cancer but don't hurt the child. As a childhood cancer survivor myself, I know that there are a lot of horrible side effects that the chemo gives you when you grow up and no longer have the cancer, such as infertility, bone density loss, heart and lung problems, and things like that. So our goal as a charity is to fund research to provide better treatments for these kids. Our event's going to be September 30th at Jones Park, and we're going to have food trucks, live music, a silent auction, and head shaving. So I see some of you still have your hair, and if you, if you want to give the rest of it, we will take it at our event, but you also don't have to do that, it is a family-friendly event, it's going to be 10 to 4 at Jones Park, and like I said, our goal is to raise as much money as possible for these kids. One way that you guys can help as council members is to get the city of Biloxi to go gold for September. September is Childhood Cancer Awareness Month, a lot of people know October is Breast Cancer Month, but many of you didn't know that September is Childhood Cancer Month. So we want everybody to put up gold ribbons, put up gold balloons, do some sort of promo at your stores or at your businesses where it shows that childhood cancer is important and that we need to raise as much awareness and funds as possible. Childhood cancer affects over 400,000 kids in the world, and one out of six, one of six of those kids will die. So it is a very important, it's the leading cause of death in children, so it is a very important cause that a lot of people maybe don't know about, and it is one of the least funded of all of the cancers. So I would love to have you guys' help and have your support, or just come to the event, get your head shaved or donate some money. So, sorry, I'm horrible at this, I hate doing this, but I appreciate you guys having me here, and like I said, we'll try to get in Biloxi next year. So just, if anybody has a good venue for something like this, let me know, and we would love to have one in Biloxi as well.
All right, thank you. All right, anyone else, anyone else in the room? All right, if not, citizens' comments are closed, we'll now move to policy agenda. Item A.
Ordinance to amend the land development ordinance related to social services, soup kitchens, and multifamily dwellings.
All right, this was moved by Mr. Tisdale, second by Mr. Glavin, discussion?
Yeah, Mr. Crell, if you'd come up and explain exactly what we're doing, thank
As we went through the, over the application that we had for the soup kitchen recently, we realized that in the definition part of the land development ordinance, there was not a definition for soup kitchen or social services agency, so we felt like we needed to go back and put one in, and what we've done is we've looked at the American Planner Association Dictionary of Uses and found the right one that we felt fit in with it. And if you, if you'll read there, you'll see that the, the social service agency is essentially, provides services, neighborhood services to people, but it doesn't include a soup kitchen. There's a separate definition that we put in there for soup kitchen, and what we've done is propose that they, these definitions be approved and that they would be allowed as conditional uses in CB and RB zoning, but would be allowed as a use by right in industrial zoning.
And that's a, that's a change for soup kitchens, that's a little bit of a change, if I, if I read that correctly?
It is. One of the things that we added in with the definition, of course, a soup kitchen as part of that definition is not classified as a restaurant, it's allowed to provide food for, or meals for people with or without cost, but we also added some language in there that prohibited loitering, that there could be no loitering after the meals were served, and that the soup kitchen would have to put up signs to that effect to show that there's no loitering or overnight sleeping on the property.
The only zone where it would be permitted would be industrial?
As a use by right, yes, sir.
As a use by right, and currently, under the zoning, it would be permitted in zones other than industrial, I think, so we're restricting the permitted zones, basically, to industrial.
That's correct. Right now in our ordinance, it's not addressed, and whenever we have someone come forward with a use and we don't have it specifically spelled out in the land development ordinance, then I'm charged with finding, using the closest definition to it to categorize it, and we just thought that it needed to be a little bit more finite than that, and that's why we're proposing this.
If you would touch on tiny homes, just briefly what they are?
Okay. Tiny homes are something that are probably going to be coming forward, this is the first edition of the building code where they've actually been listed in there, and we did adopt the appendices in the building code that addresses tiny homes, but tiny homes are actually designed where they can be moved or relocated, so for the most part, they're still on the axle, it can be pulled in and pulled out. However, we are beginning to get some applications for houses that are smaller than normal. City Council just approved a subdivision at Pops Ferry and Motzy where there are some smaller homes in there. They could be looked at as tiny homes, but they're actually built on a permanent foundation, and they're going to be one and two-story, but we, we are going to be seeing more of those come in. There are a lot of people that, that want low maintenance, so they want smaller homes, smaller yards, very little that they have to maintain, probably so that they can take advantage of a lot of the other things that Biloxi has to offer, you know, and it would essentially be a landing spot. Now, there is one other definition in this text changes that we're proposing, and it goes in line with the tiny home communities. Under our current ordinance, multifamily, if you read the definition of it, it is essentially, what it talks about is one building having multiple units in it, but what's happening now is that we're getting applications for subdivisions, like the one on Pops Ferry that we just talked about, and like the one that's down next to the Jubilee Inn on the beach, where the owner is not subdividing the property, he essentially has one piece of property, but he's putting, putting multiple houses on that one piece of property, and the intention is, is that they would rent all of those out, and that actually needs to fall under the definition of multifamily houses, because if you've got a single-family house next door, and all of a sudden 30 houses appear next door, it needs to be categorized as multifamily, and in some of the zonings, that's a conditional use, which it was, and that's why those cases came before the city council.
Thank you, Mr. Crell. That's all I have. All right, any other discussion?
So you have all this written in this one rule, the tiny homes, where they can build what they want, wherever they want to build that. You have a soup kitchen wherever you want, as long as you get it condition used. We went through a war, the last time we had a soup kitchen on the table. So you've got regional business, okay, where we located with the regional business and the community business, are they close to the neighborhood? I put people on one.
And Mr. Lawrence, that's why we put it in CB and RB zoning as conditional use, so that the planning commission and the council would have final say over whether the location is appropriate or not, so.
That's the last part, we went through the same thing, you know, so I don't, I don't see what we really accomplished or anything here, except create more problems for the city. That's all we're doing here. You, we had the same power we have on Collins, right now we got them four houses stacked on top of each other. Now you're talking about tiny homes, or whatever you want to call them. This is, to me, creating more problems for the city of Biloxi in the long run. It's not a good thing.
Well, we definitely need the definitions in there. You know, if the council doesn't agree that they need to be allowed in CB or RB at all, I mean, you could always change what we're proposing and pull that out, but you do have oversight, so.
Well, we had a soup kitchen on Water Street, and they weren't supposed to loiter, but that didn't work. People's all over the place, so two places it's been and moved to has been nothing but a problem for the neighborhood. So I'm going to head this in and say they can't stay? What are you going to do? You have to call the police, tell the police to stay all day long and make sure they don't stay? I mean, that's, that's the problem. It sounds good, although sound, but they're not going to pay attention, they have nothing else to do. So that's not a good thing, to put that too many, close to anybody in the neighborhood.
So are you making a motion to remove it from CB and RB? Are you making that motion, councilman?
I would do that.
I'll second it.
Okay, we have a first, a motion, and a second. First, our motion by Mr. Lawrence, second by Mr. Glavin. Do we have any discussion?
Yes.
On the motion?
Give me an explanation of the exact motion, just for moving social service agencies and soup kitchens, we're just restricting them from CB and RB, we're just, we're, they can only be in industrial, is what we're saying right now. That's the motion. The motion is to restrict them to only industrial zones.
At this time, you know, we can come back and add it at another time. I'm concerned that if we add this blanket to conditional use, we still are restricted. You say we have the final say-so, we are still restricted, they meet all the requirements, they can challenge. They can challenge us if we turn something down in these zones, correct?
Correct.
They can be challenged. And, and maybe we, we add it to the commercial at this time and then at some later time revisit this, you know, instead of keep doing these zoning changes, we get ourselves in, in trouble, in my opinion, so.
I, I would ask the council that even if you remove it from there, that we do need the definitions in the book right now, the specific definitions, and that ask that y'all would approve that part of it.
I'm okay with it.
So you're asking that it be approved as is, but without the CB and the, what was the other one?
RB. Regional business.
That you would approve the definitions and approve it as a use by right.
Just remove those two?
Yes.
Okay, any other discussion?
Yes, on this amendment?
On the amendment.
Yeah. And what you're doing is taking this decision then out of the council's hands, basically by not permitting conditional use in CB and RB, which under what was originally proposed would come to us. Yet on the short-term rentals, when another council member and I looked to prohibit short-term rentals in multifamily housing, the council wanted to, the council wanted to hear those, reminding myself and the other council member that we still have control over where we go. So my point being, on this issue, my, my colleagues, my friends up here, most of them, I, I may be on one side of the issue, and yet when a similar issue came up, they were on the other side of the issue. I just wanted to point that out. I think we should continue, should approve this as it was originally presented, that CB and RB be conditional uses if these uses come up before us.
And, and too, the other part of that is that if you do approve one as conditional use and there are problems there, then the planning commission and the city council have the right to revoke that conditional use permit and shut the operation down.
Right. That concludes my comments. Thank you. All right, Mr. Demming?
Mr. Tisdale, you make a good point, and I, I tend to agree with some of it. I'd like to point out that there's a slight difference. These social service agencies and soup kitchen, by their own definition, are only designed to create transient traffic. They're not overnight guests, they're not family-oriented, they're not designed to be part of the neighborhood, they're strictly designed to draw and attract transient people to the neighborhood. While that's similar to short-term, it's also different. After the motion, I do have a question about something else. So when we moved amended, I'd like to acknowledge and discuss the remainder of the.
Okay, if there's no more discussion, we will now call for the vote on the amendment. All in favor of the amendment? Okay, one more time, all in favor on the amendment, of the amendment? Hands up. Okay, three, all opposed. Okay, so we have a three-four vote. Mr. Lawrence, Mr. Demming, and Mr. Glavine are for. Mr. Guines, Ms. Newman, Mr. Tisdale, and myself are against. So we'll now go back to the original and have discussion on that. Mr. Guines?
Yeah, I actually agree with Paul, so I just wanted to put that on the record. I actually agree with.
Okay. Any other discussion?
Just, just a question with regard to the definitions. I have no idea what a tiny home is, other than it's a small residence. But if that's the case, then isn't it just a residence? Is there a square foot requirement? Is there, what makes it a tiny home? And there's no definition in here, so your opinion would be subjective. Is there any way we can add a definition in here?
The assumption in the code with a tiny home is that it is still on an axle and can be moved from place to place. And from a building code standpoint, a fire code standpoint, we treat those differently because they're not something that can be anchored down. It's more like a home that can go into a, a mobile home park or an RV park or something like that. But it couldn't, couldn't really be considered as a permanent structure on a house unless the axle was removed and it was anchored down, and they could show that, that the tiny home would meet the wind resistance requirements of 150 miles an hour.
Right, yeah, I think so what he's saying, for our purposes, it would have to have an axle, but the first word you said, or the first two words you said is by assumption the code. Can we get something to codify that assumption?
Sure.
Thank you.
I, I'd like, if there's no other discussion, I'd like to make a motion to table it. I, I'm not comfortable with this. I, I just know I don't want, I may not want tiny homes, or my people that I represent may not want tiny homes or soup kitchen in RB regional business around the corner from there. That's not complementing, that's not a service that's complementing the residential area. And I'd like to table it, subject to call, to get a chance to review it a little bit more and not move quickly on this. This is tiny homes, first time I've heard of tiny homes. And I hear you, Paul, but that's just my opinion. I'm not, you know, totally trying to squash anything, you know? But, but if this is a new thing, you know, I, I don't want to move too fast and all of a sudden we, we vote it down. We say, okay, we, we don't want it in regional business, and then they counter that with an appeal, saying, well, yeah, we have the right to do this because it meets some of these tests.
Well, I don't want the, I don't want the council to be confused about the fact that we're asking for this definition of multifamily, for that to be confused with tiny homes. It's, it's two different issues.
Sure.
This multifamily we're talking about is houses that are mounted on a permanent foundation, so.
Understood. But again, going back to soup kitchens, I think there's an appropriate place for those. I think it meets a need. But then to put it into regional business and then all of a sudden we're challenged on it, even though, you know, they can appeal it and they can win those appeals, that has happened. We've all experienced that, where even though it's been appealed, it could happen. So I'd, I'd love a few weeks or, or some time to, to study it, to get a little bit more comfortable before we rush, rush into something.
So we have a motion. Is there a second? Okay, so we have a first by Mr. Glavine, a second by Mr. Demming. Discussion on tabling.
Yeah, could, rather than subject to call, could we table it for 30 days and just see it on the September agenda, the first Tuesday in September?
Okay, so we have a motion on the table to table for 30 days to the first meeting of September. You second that still, Mr. Demming?
Yes.
Okay, any other discussion? All in favor of tabling for 30 days? We have a seven-o vote. Okay, now move to item, agenda item B.
Ordinance to approve a zoning map amendment to authorize a change in zoning for two parcels of land from neighborhood business and residential estate restricted to regional business for 13041 Lorraine Road.
All right, I move this. It was second by Mr. Glavine. Mr. Krill, this is the property just north of Dollar General.
That's correct.
The storage unit property right next to the balls. What are they wanting to do?
This was an existing mini-storage warehouse operation that was bought by the general, Mr. Collins that owns the other one.
Yeah.
And what it is, is that he wants to add boat and RV storage to the rear of the property. In order to do that, he needs RB zoning. He is right next door to RB zoning because everything on Kaylee Cove is zoned RB.
And there was no opposition from the neighborhood? Okay, I have no questions.
Only comment I want to make is this is regional business. This is an example of a business that complements the needs in, of the area, unlike some of the other discussion we just previously had.
All right, any other discussion? Call for the question, all in favor. Seven-zero. Next item, please.
Ordinance to grant a zoning map amendment for the establishment of a planned development and Phil Master Plan for residential development to be known as the cottages at Howard.
All right, this is moved by Mr. Lawrence, second by Mr. Guines.
I had, I had moved that earlier, but what I'm doing, I'm stepping out of the room.
Okay.
This is the Kenfolk, a lot of family people involved. He told me it wasn't that close, Peter, but I don't think it's right to do that, so I'll just step out of there.
Mr. Guines, any discussion?
Yeah, this is something that's firmly within my ward. I think it will be great for the area. It's an area that's been, we've been waiting for development in that area, and now he's going to do something dramatic and do something fantastic in the area. So this is something I fully support, even before the ward lines changed. So I think it'll be great for the community.
All right, thank you. Any other discussion?
Mr. Tisdale? Yeah, I like, like the project, like the concept, only have one question. I think your engineer is here.
The designer's here, yes, sir.
I, I'm just looking at the proximity of the homes. You've got, you've got one on the corner lot of Cop and.
Lee Street.
Lee Street. Okay. And then you have two fronting Howard Avenue.
Howard Avenue.
Right? And the driveway goes between those two?
Yes, sir.
And those are two car, carports or garages, right?
Yes, sir.
I'm just curious, can you get two in with the turning radius, given the width of the driveway?
In the, the, the drive coming off of Howard Avenue is 16 feet wide, okay? We have 20, 16 feet from the building to the center of that drive, 16 feet from the building to that drive.
Okay.
So that gives you 32 feet to back out.
You could, you could park, you could pull your car in the garage?
I have a F-154, you know, door cab, and.
Could you pull in a Volkswagen Beetle beside it?
But, yes, yes, a Volkswagen Beetle, yes, you could.
Okay, it'd be a tight squeeze. And that's, that's the only question I had, and I'm curious. I'm no engineer or architect or anything, but I love.
It's not, it's really not any different than, the ordinance now allows 22-foot drives, which I hate in parking lots, because you go to Walmart or someplace and they got a little 22-foot drive and you're trying to back out of a parking lot, but those things are horrible. I don't like doing anything less than 24 personally, myself.
Right.
It's because I drive a big truck and getting in and out of a parking space is difficult. And this is the same scenario. I try to make it wide enough to where.
And, and the only, I guess, consequence of that would be if I can't pull my second vehicle in, then I've got to park it somewhere, and I don't know if there's parking on Howard Avenue. That's just me. If I'm shopping and I'm looking for a house, before I buy a house, I'd want to park, be able to park both my vehicles in there and I do it.
It's one of those life things. I mean, do both y'all drive SUV and a big truck? Or do you have a big, big vehicle and a small vehicle? It's, it's, you know, we don't.
I was, I was just curious. I like the project. Thank you, sir.
I have a question. How, how big are the units?
They're around 1,800 square feet.
1,800, so.
Big cottage, big cottages, yes, sir.
Okay, what is the current zoning in this area? What's it zoned?
It's a, it's a.
RS, residential, okay.
Cop, Coppin Lee.
I got you. All right, thank you.
For you old folks, old Bill Bruce.
Got you.
Any other discussion? All right, if not, I'll call for the question, all in favor. Have a six-zero vote. Mr. Lawrence is out of the room. Would you let him know that we're finished? Now move to.
Do you want me to go get him?
Do we have to? Maybe wait a few minutes?
You can keep him out there a little longer.
We'll now move to item D. This was moved by Mr. Lawrence, second by Mr. Guines. Mr. Lawrence?
I'm sorry.
Read it, please.
Amendment to the birthing rates for the small Craft Harbor Point Cadet Marina, Sherman Canaan Fish and Dock, and Biloxi Commercial Fish and Dock.
Yeah, I looked at it, I actually talked to a couple of the charter boat people, and I don't think at this time we're going to be charging a dollar more. I think we need to have the harbors work. We're doing that, changing them up. And once we finish working the harbor over, then, then you can bring it back and look at it. But I can't support this at this time. These are small commercial businesses, and a dollar put on a 40-foot boat, that's $480 in taxes. So you're talking about $550, $560 increase. So I just don't think it's the right time to do that. Thank you.
All right, Mr. Guines, do you have anything?
No, I think it was already at $4, correct? Was it already at $4?
It was, it was at $6 in 2017, and it was cut in half to $3, so.
From $6 to $3.
And we're proposing now to go from $3 to $4.
$4, so it's just a little small increase.
And, and last week, or last time y'all asked us to look at all the rates of surrounding marinas, we've done that. And I think even with the $4, we would be definitely lower or as low as, as almost every other port on the coast.
Okay, thank you. Any other discussion?
I do.
Mr. Glavine?
I thought we were bringing the commercial shrimpers down, or keeping them at $3. Did we not do this in this measure?
We just tabled it. We didn't, we didn't actually move it. I, I'd like the record to show that they did increase their expenses because we started charging them for some of the utilities and amenities that they didn't pay before. I'd like the record to show that and everybody understand that. There's a true burden to our, especially our fishermen. And I understand about, I understand about charter boat captains, but I think the disparity with the income that they, the shrimpers struggle to make is different than our charter boat captains and certainly our transient. I'd, I'd like to propose an amendment that we keep the commercial fishermen birthing rate at $3. I'm, I am personally okay with the, the rest of the recommended increases.
So you're making a motion to make for the, the shrimpers $3, but for charter, increase to $4?
Correct.
Do I have a second?
I'll second it.
Okay, we have a first by Mr. Glavine, second by Mr. Guines. Any discussion? Any discussion? No discussion, okay? I'll call for the vote on the amendment of amending it to $4 for commercial, or for charter fishermen and.
All right, I do have some discussion.
Okay, we'll go back. Mr. Demming?
I think I've been against this, however, I'm just curious, when you talk about the, the financial burden, why do you think that the financial burden only applies to commercial fishermen and not the other commercial entities?
Is that a question for me?
It is.
Yeah. I think it's relevant that the price that they get for their catch, their shrimp, has been consistently, for decades, it hasn't increased. If anything, it's decreased because of the pressure of imported seafood that comes into the market. That's number one. The, their fuel cost, and they, keep in mind, they go out not just for a charter trip for a half-day, they, they stay out for weeks out on the water, some of them. And they pull these nets that have troll boards and the netting itself and the catch that consume a tremendous amount of fuel. It's not a line in the water trying to troll for fish or pulling up to a wreck and dropping anchor and trying to catch snapper. They're out there pulling those nets, consuming a lot of fuel, as well as ice that they have to put down into the hole to store their catch and preserve it until they get back to, to port. And so I believe their burden is significantly higher than some of our charter boat captains. I'm not saying the charter boat captains don't have any burdens, you know, or pressures. We all do in these economic times, but I think especially so for our fishermen and our shrimpers.
I disagree. I think that they all, everybody has a cost of doing business, and we all face competition. And I agree with you, but I think we should include all commercial, all commercial entities, not just one group of commercial entities. That's my two cents.
Any other discussion on the amendment? No other, okay, if there's no other discussion, I'll call for the question, all in favor of amending to $4 for charter fishermen, leaving $3 for commercial fishermen, all in favor. I have a vote of, I'm sorry, all opposed. So we have four to three. Mr. Guines, Ms. Newman, was that Mr. Tisdale? Or, or, I'm sorry, Mr. Glavine and myself. Opposed is George Robert and Mr. Tisdale. So the amendment passes. Now we'll go back to the, okay, so we don't have to discuss the other, it's passed, okay? All right. We'll now move to the consent agenda.
You got to vote on it.
Yeah, we got to vote on it as amended, yeah, okay.
Amendment passed now as amended.
So is there any other discussion? No other discussion?
Yeah, I do.
Okay.
Since, um, that passed like that, I mean, it's hard to believe that you beat up the charter boat people who represents the harbor. There's 80% of the people in the harbors are charter boat captains, and they're both at 30, 40 feet, 50 feet. So when you increase that, they, you're talking about $500 to $600 a year for what? For nothing. Then fix the harbors, electricity, they have a problem in the harbors. The harbor's in terrible shape, and we charging them all to park there now. So I, I can't support this that way at all. None.
Any other discussion? All right. Now we'll vote on the item as amended. All in favor? All opposed? Okay, same vote, four to three. All right, we'll now move to the consent agenda. Do I have a motion?
Oh, wait.
Resolution.
Yeah, some resolution.
Oh, I'm sorry. Sorry. I skipped over those accidentally. All right, next item.
Resolution to grant preliminary subdivision, subdivision replat of lots one, two, and three of Keller J H Estates to create five single-family residential subdivision lots to be known as the cottages at Howard.
All right, move that.
I'll second it.
Okay, we have a first and a second discussion? Yep, same thing. All right. Any other discussion? Call for the question. All in favor, six-zero. Mr. Lawrence out of the room. Item F?
Resolution granting minor subdivision final plot approval for 13281 Paradise Lane.
I'll move it.
I'll second. Okay, discussion?
I have no discussion on this, a minor plot approval.
All right. I have no discussion. Any other discussion? All in favor? All opposed? Seven-zero. We'll now move to the consent agenda. Do I have a motion?
I'll move it.
Second.
First by Mr. Lawrence, second by Mr. Tisdale. Discussion?
This one, uh, the 140 Lemieux Street, which tree is supposed to be the majestic tree?
The one right out back, the one right here in back, City Hall.
The one in the back?
Yes, sir.
So why, why you do that now? It's been there for 500 years. So it's been there for 500 years, nobody knew what it was before?
What? The, the tree ordinance, the tree ordinance allows the tree committee or anyone that has a tree to make a recommendation about, uh, a tree that's in their yard or on their property to, uh, have it designated as a majestic tree. And what this does, it adds another level of protection to those trees so that in the event that they need to be trimmed or someone attempts to cut them down, then, uh, the owner would have to hire a track-qualified arborist to come in and do a determination about it before a permit can be issued. So what it does, it essentially protects that tree so that it's not, limbs are not cut off of it, or it's not cut down without, uh, additional oversight. That's what it amounts to.
And that'd be the case with that tree anyway. I have no problem doing that, I just, it's been there forever. It's been like that, you know?
These are actually the first two, the one here and the one on Miss Wyman's property that is on here today are the first two trees to be declared majestic trees.
Question, Jerry, on this topic. Uh, what's the con, so if I understand this correctly, if I have a majestic tree in my front yard, and I decide after a hurricane, or before a hurricane, I want to remove that limb, and I go out and I cut that, I trim that limb, and somebody notes that, and I get a notice of violation, I get a notice of violation, what's the consequence for that? Do I end up in community court? And when I end up in community court, would it be the, uh, would the mitigation standard be what's required? So for cutting down a, a, a 500-year-old limb, say on the geese tree, I'd be required to plant two 3-inch, 6-foot saplings of live oaks? That's it, just two, about 250 bucks each?
It would, it would be the fines in addition to, uh, the mitigation requirement. We've just had two, uh, live oaks taken down on Beach Boulevard, and for those two coming down, uh, they decided to pay into the mitigation bank, the cost was $3,200.
Okay, so, so the cost, so there's, there's a fine associated with that as well?
There'd be a fine for violating the ordinance, and in addition to that, uh...
Do you know what that fine is? I'm just curious, do you know what the fine is off the top of your head?
Not offhand, no, sir.
Okay, thank you.
All right, Mr. Lawrence, any other items?
$46,000, we're moving to the, we lost $46,000? What was the problem there?
Production cost, revenue.
Say again?
Production cost and revenue.
We had, we bid for this item before the budget was, um, set last year, so the bind, the printing increased and the postage has increased, so that's why we had a little bit of a shortfall to move money over to pay for the rest of this, um, the printing.
$46,000 short from last year. The pay is all.
Because of, no, it's for the increase of the printing and the postage.
That's a pretty good increase, $46,000.
Yeah, the budget that we had last year, correct, increase, you're correct, increase from last year, yes.
All right. So can we increase this coming year? Can we increase the price of advertising to make up that difference?
Yeah, we've requested, um, what the anticipated increase is, and we're trying to go out for bids before the budget is set, so we can go ahead and put all that money in there and be up to date.
All right.
I've said before, now that, that should be the easiest self-advertising in the world. We shouldn't have that thing taking in ton of money.
We advertise, we do advertise.
So we need to have somebody selling ads, just not hoping somebody call.
We do.
We do what?
Public Affairs does. We go out and actively request for people to sign up to be an advertiser, and then we, um, have people just emailing us asking to be part of it. We give them the specs, the specs is online, anybody can advertise, and we go from there.
I mean, there's nobody around here does. Every month, every household in the city blocks it. You can't beat that.
Correct.
I mean, that is, that's really cheap advertising now.
My, my question was, so we have a $46,000 shortfall, so this year, can the, the cost to advertise, can we increase that a little bit for each month or whatever to where it makes up that difference to where we're not back here again? Is that something we're doing?
We're doing our best. Um, we do actually charge a little bit more than a lot of other publications do for advertising, so, um, we are trying to request more people to advertise and maybe work with their fees.
Okay. Okay, yeah, my question was increasing fees a little bit per month for the ads to make up that difference.
That's what I'm saying, we're already kind of high, so it's kind of hard to, it will hurt us if we do.
Okay. All right, any other questions?
Wasn't that budget 180,000? So it's like 225 now? What was the budget, wasn't it 180?
Close to that. I have to look up the exact numbers.
All right. Any other discussion? Any other items, Mr. Lawrence?
Yeah, one on, uh, do we pass the harbor thing, so we paid them $16,000 on the port commission thing? What's the 16,000 for? Now that's the dollar foot we just drilled the charter boat people for.
I have no idea what you're saying. Which item are you talking about?
Which item?
What number or letter?
Uh, E, enough. Enough's enough.
For them to buy a truck.
It's an inter-fund transfer.
Yeah, E.
Said you got to provide sufficient funds, so what we do.
I, item E, he's asking...
The purchase of one truck.
All right, but this is, this is an inter-fund transfer.
Correct.
Correct. It's moving money inside the port budget from one category to another in order to be able to buy a truck. Is that right? Okay, thank you.
All right, anything else?
No, I just thought it was tied into the charter boat increase, anyway, just checking.
All right, Mr. Gines?
I have none.
Ms. Demming? I did it.
Robert and Charlie should be the first to congratulate.
Man, I'm, I think I was the only person that had ever done that.
You're doing so well.
Ms. Newman, Newman, I'm sorry.
I'm dead when I get home. She's watching this, and I'm in trouble.
Mr. Demming?
No, nothing.
And Mr. Tisdale?
I wanted to be the first to congratulate Mr. Demming. Oh, nothing, thank you.
Mr. Glavine? All right, and I have nothing, so I'll call for the vote, and then I'll ask for exceptions. All in favor of the consent agenda, seven-zero. Any exceptions? No exceptions. We'll now move to the code enforcement hearings. Mr. Creel?
The first case, item A, James Nathaniel Grossman, 1983, Southern Avenue, this property is still in violation.
Do I have anyone here to speak on behalf of Mr. Grossman or against Mr. Grossman? On behalf or against? All right. If not, this case is closed.
Item V, Annie S. Mebauer and Lena Palmer, Zero Keller Avenue, this property, um, we met the owner out there, and they asked for 30 days. I told them I would ask the council for 30.
Second.
All right, we have a first by Mr. Gines, second by Mr. Demming. All in favor? 30-day extension, seven-zero.
Item C, Quang N. Nguyen, 2166 Sherwood Place, this property is still in violation.
All right, do I have anyone here to speak on behalf of Quang Nguyen or up against?
They're here.
Okay, Ms. Nguyen, if you will, please come forward and, um, sign, sign the, um, the paper.
Hi, my name is Mytrin and my husband Juan Nguyen. But my husband, my brother and me honor the house at 2166 Sherwood Place, but my husband and me really leave at 2152 Alitri. Sorry, that's why we did not receive the notice on June 23rd, 2023. Second, we only focus on caring our animal that birthed late our year. Now we get on animal away, so we will focus on leaning our yard, that we will accept any penalty for our violation. Third, we tried to work on our yard and we had called two men for lean, and they come at 9:00 AM today, but they not show up, and I just work for, by myself. So I ask you for let us have more time to lean because the weather to sever, to expose. So we only work for hour a day, two hour early in morning and two hour late afternoon. That hour we can stay outside. Finally, if possible, let us know our care in writing because our inlet is limited in hearing. Thank you for your listening.
Okay, um, how long, how long would you need to get this cleaned up?
Um, we did for four hour a day, so I don't know, you can come and chat because we, we, we keep walking, but I don't know when we finish because you know that for four hour a day, we can, you know, you know, you can stay outside.
I'll make a motion for 30-day extension.
I'll second.
All right, any discussion?
Ms. Nguyen, with 30, do you think 30 days will be enough?
Oh, thank you, 30 days?
Okay, all in favor?
Today, yes. So will be, uh, maybe after Labor Day because acceptable it had Labor Day, can, can you come after Labor Day?
Yes. Well, if you get it cleaned up, you won't have to come back. If you have it cleaned up in 30 days?
Well, I, I say, because you say you will come to our yard to check it lean or not, but you gave me one month to lean, but I think the Labor Day we had a day off, I still working after lean, I still go working, so that Labor Day we have more day off, so that's why I ask you come after.
Want to amend it to 45 days?
Yes, let's, let's amend it.
Add 45 days.
Okay, so, so all in favor? All right, all right. 45 days.
So I'll give you time after Labor Day.
Thank you. All right, next item, Mr. Creel?
Thank you. So that on?
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
She got excited.
That's my first hearing.
Get an extra day now.
Can't make it 46 days now.
Chief Giger, I think Chief Mills is a little bit quicker than you.
Okay, uh, item, item D, I'm sorry, okay. Item D, ODS Swetman at all, Zero Keller Avenue, this property is still in violation.
All right. Do we have anyone here on behalf, to speak on behalf or against Odie Swetman? All right, if not, this case is closed.
Item E, Christopher Charles Wilson, 2175 Atkinson Road, that case has been resolved.
All right, we'll now move to the routine agenda. Do I have a motion?
Move.
Second. First by Mr. Lawrence, second by Mr. Tisdale. Mr. Lawrence?
All right, Walt, you said you're going to have a lot of good news for us today. And don't be looking over at it, Popo, you're handling this by yourself.
I agree.
He knows what to say.
So I contacted MEMA this morning to get an update on where they were with the 950,000 in funding, because it's not on the website yet. Um, the response was Horn Group, which is their accounting firm, um, as of last Friday morning, received the, uh, checks from the pay app, and they're going through their review queues. Usually takes a week, sometimes a lot less, so hopefully by the end of this Friday, it's in the Mississippi PA website, and that starts the clock on MEMA's side. Right now, it's with their accountants, they're going through to verify the costs, and then hopefully by Friday, it's in the system. And then from that time, it usually takes 12 to 15 business days.
Is, is anything else, that's what you wait for this one, the 950?
Sir?
That's only one? Do you have anything else?
No, sir. It's, and the, the reason why it took this long to get here is there was no docket in the middle of July on your second council meeting, which, that keeps the money flowing. So since the docket wasn't on the second council meeting, there was a docket on the third, and that's why it's taken so much longer.